Board meeting to order for Thursday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Heidi, can you call the, uh, roll, please?
Here.
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 Christopher Alman.
Uh, absent with cause.
John Wall.
Here.
David Trunstow.
Here.
Ellen Corneille.
Here.
Mr. Vice Chair Yost, members of the House.
Thank you. Um, can we, is there a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five?
I make a motion to accept them?
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
Right.
Abstain.
So one abstain, you got that?
Two abstains.
Two? Oh, you were here.
I wasn't here either.
Okay, got it. One more. So Heidi, on July seventeenth, Christine was not here, so she'll abstain from voting as to that particular, uh, set of minutes.
Uh, correct. So do you have a motion or vote against the June?
We had, we, we did them collectively. You want me to do them individually?
Oh, I thought you just did them individually.
I just, yeah, I did my act, but I just realized, so maybe, maybe, uh, can we do a different, can we re-vote? Because I, I can, I'd like to make a motion on the May twenty-second and June eighteenth.
Yeah, why don't we do them individually?
Okay. Like to make a motion to accept the, the minutes from May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Abstain.
Two abstentions.
Like to make a motion to accept the June eighteenth minutes, twenty twenty-five?
There a second?
The June eighteen minutes are... Ellen is not voting on them, the June eighteen.
I was here, yeah, I was here at all three, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I'll second it, sure.
All in favor? Aye.
Abstain. You have to abstain?
Abstain.
Three zero.
Three abstaining.
Three abstaining, yeah. Nothing to talk about.
And a motion to accept the me- meeting minutes of July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five?
What was the, which one?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve.
There a second?
Yes. I'll, I'll second.
You were at the meeting.
I was here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, you were present at that meeting, right?
Yeah.
All right, um, for the edification of the public that's here, we're going to hear an appeal, which is on the agenda at C-one, and there's going to be two matters that are going to be deferred. D-one Gibson Court Condominium Association, and D-two Cherry is going to be deferred for two months. Is that correct, Heidi?
Correct. That's the need to defer, um, Gibson Court to October twenty-third?
There a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer D-one Gibson Court Condominium Association to a meeting of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And is there a motion to defer Cherry for two months? So that would be the November twentieth calendar?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, defer the Cherry, um, appeal for November twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I need to know, according to the rules of procedure, um, are, are you requiring the applicant to notify the abutters again?
On Cherry?
On Cherry. It's not, if, if the first mail-in, um, after this first deferral, the second deferral is approved, the applicant is to notify the applicant, the abutters again?
Yeah, I think they have to notify the abutters.
I'm sorry?
Then they have to notify the abutters.
So who seconded that, sorry?
I think Ellen did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the first, uh, matter is, uh, an appeal, uh, Kearney. Is there counsel present for that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm observing for John Carrick, behalf of the Ellen, uh, John Kearney, um, the number of prosecutor, feel here, I don't know whether or not the, uh, move first, or I get my case, but, uh, in any event, I'll, uh, proceed.
Go ahead.
This is a very small, uh, very small shed in the backyard, it's been there for a very long time. Some abutters will here complain, purchase some property, um, and complain about the shed, but no one can see the back of the property, it's been there for twenty years. The, the ordinance, which I have copies of, which indicated that accessory structures, uh, must be one-third of the distance from the primary structure, was passed in two thousand six, two thousand sixteen, excuse me, I have copies of that, we have to, uh, present that, it's not already, uh, a member of the record, Jim?
Yep. You wanna mark this as, uh, exhibit one? Yeah, let me give one to Matt. Mark this as exhibit one.
I have it.
I have it.
It's in the package.
Do you have this?
He can share.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, essentially, I don't know if anybody wants the opportunity to look at that, but essentially, our argument is that the shed has grandfathered as a result of being in before this ordinance was enacted. As you know, under state law and under, um, Narragansett Town Ordinances, any pre-existing structure is, can may continue, uh, if there's a change in the ordinance that makes that non-conforming. I have, as we all know, these days, you can't hide from cameras anywhere, so there's a satellite picture from the Narragansett, uh, GIS website, um, there's several iterations over the years, some are better than others. I have, um, uh, they do not, the, I, I took copies of the pictures, um, they do not, um, date them automatically, but I dated them and initialed them. I have one from two thousand and eight, and I have one from two thousand and twenty-four. I'm sorry, I only have, uh, two copies, I didn't make additional copies of it, so I'd like to present those as exhibits as well.
Mark, uh, mark these as exhibit two.
The sheds do not require a permit under the ordinances, they're under two hundred square feet, no permit is required under that requirement, under the present ordinance, so no permit would have been required to, or put them in place, um, and so we contend that the shed has grandfathered because it's been there since that period of time. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
What's the ages of the shed? Do they know when the?
Shed, uh, they per- they purchased the property in nineteen ninety-seven, I think they, I think they, um, built the house maybe in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand. I think, I think, let me just see here, I think I have a... Thought I had one from two thousand and three, I, I believe that... I thought I had a picture from before then, it's approximately since two thousand and three, I believe. I, I've indicated the picture from two thousand and eight, was there probably a good number of years before that.
Okay, thank you.
Question, um, were there any setbacks at that time, twenty years ago?
I do not believe so, um, and I don't believe it's my burden to establish that they were. I, I have these two thousand and sixteen requirements that indicate that there is setbacks for accessory structures.
Any other questions for Mr. Gary?
Yeah, what, what is the significance of two thousand sixteen?
That's when, that was when the ordinance was enacted by the town. That required accessory structures to be set back one-third of the distance from a primary structure.
Okay, so that's the first that you know of, that you're putting forward for the ordinance in town?
That's the first that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not gonna say I did extensive research to go back and see, uh, but that's what I'm aware of, that that ordinance, which is applicable today, was enacted.
Okay, thank you.
And so Attorney Gary, your argument is that because the structure was constructed well before the enactment of that ordinance, that whatever ordinance was in effect at the time would control this decision, that we, well, this appeal?
Exactly. And I think it's the town's burden to establish that there was an ordinance in effect at that time, not mine.
Anything else?
I have nothing else. I know my brother is here with his clients, I'm gonna object to his testimony, this is not a public hearing, this is an appeal of a, of a building, of zoning code matter between my client and the town, uh, he's not an intervener, he has no right to intervene in this matter, and I would suggest that his testimony is not, um, relevant, it should not be taken.
You mean the testimony of his clients or argument from Mr. Landry, which I think would be permitted since this is just an appeal of a decision of the building official? Is that correct, Mr. Salitro?
In other words, he can make an argument, just like you did, as to what the law would be, but...
No, he can, he, with all due respect, I don't think he can make an argument, he's intervening in this matter, if he were to be doing that. By making a legal argument, he's an intervener. This is a case between the town, it's as if this was a zoning is in the nature of a criminal offense, so it, this is in the nature of a criminal offense, it's not, don't get me wrong, it's not criminal, but it's in the nature of a criminal offense where the town has brought an action against my client, we've appealed that. I don't think anyone has a right then to come into this proceeding unless they want to intervene, and I would suggest to you that they do not have standing to intervene in a public matter, in a, in a private matter.
I think the person since Wayne may have put on, uh, his positions, since he's the one who issued the violation.
Can I respond just to the open nature of the hearing before presenting? For the record, Attorney Matthew Landry from the Office of, Office of Bliss and Cabin, on behalf of the, um, complainants, Stephen Nancy Richards, they own the property just immediately, uh, to the east, there's obviously no love lost, uh, between these two, uh, owners. Respectfully, this is an open, public meeting, my client received notice of this appeal as a result of the procedure, so what would the point of notice be to the abutters within two hundred feet, um, if not to allow them an opportunity to speak? I don't intend to have my clients testify, I'd like to, uh, provide some additional support to the, um, request for enforcement action that we made, I think a legal argument is certainly warranted, I don't need to ask my clients to testify, I think you've got enough in the record, um, but to the extent we're not allowed to speak, I think that's grossly negligent to not allow, um, and a part of that receive notice to speak, especially if they're represented by counsel, but I defer to the solicitor if he has any comment to that.
Yeah, we're gonna need some guidance from the solicitor, because my, my, uh, experience, at least on this board, and as an attorney as well, is that these matters are purely appellate matters, so to speak, so, there's, we've never had any testimony that I'm aware of in any, uh, appeal of a decision of a building official to deny something, which is sort of what the situation is here, so I, I don't know, we're gonna have to have Attorney Salitro give us some advice.
Sure, sure, it's, it's not purely appellate, you're standing this evening in the shoes of the building official, you're not bound by, say, a record below, so you could hear evidence tonight, you could hear testimony tonight. Uh, whether or not you choose to hear from Mr. Landry, I think that's in the board's discretion, to his point, it is a public meeting, I would encourage transparency, um, at a minimum, I think you should hear from Mr. Pimentel as to why he issued this notice, and I think it would be appropriate for him to present at this time.
All right. You mind if, let's, let's take back course, we'll have...
Please.
Mr. Pimentel give his, uh, version of events, and then we'll let you, uh, proceed.
Come on, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Do you sound like a gentleman, a gentleman, a gentleman?
I do. Wayne Pimental, P-I-M-P-N-T-A-L.
Good evening. Um, I'll give you a, a kind of a brief history as to how this violation was brought to my attention, uh, I received a letter from, uh, Legal Counsel Landry, uh, on behalf of his clients, uh, that there appeared to be an encroachment of a, uh, accessory structure shed based upon a survey that was done as part of a other project that, uh, his, um, clients were involved with on the development of that parcel. Upon looking at the, uh, the survey, uh, it was in consulting with legal counsel at that time, uh, it was determined that a violation should be issued, that it, as it was brought to, to our attention. It wasn't quite clear based upon the survey, uh, how much of a violation the shed encroached, it certainly appeared that it was either on the line or quite crossed slightly over, uh, but without, uh, further, uh, surveying, I would not be able to tell what the actual violation was. Again, this survey that was submitted to me was part of a subdivision proposal for the development of the lot and had nothing to do with the shed, uh, but this was, again, brought to my attention, so I issued a violation based upon the fact that it didn't meet the, uh, the current setbacks, uh, based upon the size of the shed, it would qualify to meet one-third of the required setbacks for that zone, um, which were provided to, to the Kearneys. The, let me just take a look at my notes here, the, the section that was cited by Mr. Gary as taking effect in two thousand sixteen is not accurate, there was a, uh, an amendment to the original, uh, section of that ordinance which talks about the one-third, I have a copy of here that I can provide to the, uh, staff to go into the record from nineteen ninety-eight zoning, zoning ordinance, which had that section in the ordinance at that time, uh, and I think it even predated that, I wasn't able to locate an older version, but I went back as nineteen ninety-eight, which was prior to any photos that were submitted tonight, so, uh, I will provide, uh, copies of that to the staff tomorrow morning, so they have that for the record. Also, the, uh, the shed size, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen, the building code was amended to allow for structures, uh, that were up to two hundred square feet to be exempt from, uh, building permits. Prior to two thousand eighteen, sheds, uh, that were only above sixty-four square feet were exempted, so I'm not quite sure of the size of the shed, but it may have required a permit at the time.
I'm sorry, could you tell us what that number was again? Did you say sixty-four feet?
Sixty-four square feet. Um, prior to two thousand eighteen, a permit was required, after two thousand eighteen, that square footage went up to two hundred feet to be exempt. So that's pretty much, uh, the testimony that I have, uh, be more than willing to answer any questions you may have.
The one question I have is that, um, you said it appears that the shed is on the property line or slightly over onto the Kearney property? Just wanna make sure I understood that correctly.
No, the, the shed of the Kearneys is on the, uh, property, either on the line or over the property line of the abutters.
I'm sorry, I said that backwards.
The Richards. And again, I believe the survey is a part of your packet, and if you kinda look at it, it's very, it's pretty difficult to determine what, what the extent of the violation is in terms of, uh, feet and inches, although it does appear to be the, either on the line or slightly over. There would probably need to be confirmation of an additional class-one survey, uh, if it's determined that they wanna seek, uh, relief on this, uh, if not, then it would have to be moved, uh, to a distance, uh, equal to one-third of the current setbacks. Yes.
What was the, do you know if there were setbacks in the nineteen ninety-eight amendment?
They were, yeah, they were, um, they would have been, uh, let me see if my... They would have been slightly different than they are today because we amended ours in two thousand twenty-four, but there would have been setbacks, and, but they would have qualified for the one-third of that, uh, I can, I don't have that in front of me, I'm not sure what the, the zoning district is for that particular parcel, um, R-eighty, but non-conforming, so there's a calculation now, uh, with a modification, that we would take the size of the lot divided by the eighty thousand, or any zoning district that's as close as possible to determine what the current setbacks would be for that lot.
Any other questions?
I have a question, I, I know you said you're gonna provide it in the morning, but for our purposes today, can you read to us what you believe the relevant, uh, setbacks are from what you're referencing in, in front of you? You said you would get it to us tomorrow, but can you tell us what it says today specifically?
What they are today?
Can you read the statute, that portion of the ordinance that you're referring to?
The, the one that Mr. Gary had talked about, the two thousand sixteen change?
If I understand your testimony, are, you were suggesting that a prior version applied? What I'm looking for is the language of that prior version?
I have to research that.
Okay.
Um, because there were, there are also some, the ordinance changed in two thousand twenty-four pretty significantly for non-conforming lots and how the setbacks are determined, so I really need to go back and make sure that I'm, uh, providing the correct ones. Uh, I can provide that to staff, and then they can forward it to the board, but right now I don't have what those setbacks, uh, were at that time.
But you are saying there were setbacks?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And you're referring to a nineteen ninety-eight zoning ordinance?
The one, I, I just picked this one up as one that I had in my office to find out when, 'cause I saw Mr. Gary's response that it only took place in two thousand sixteen, I think it was amended then, but the, the, the one-third was still on the books at that point, and I have the nineteen ninety-eight zoning ordinance, which in fact shows that. I think Mr. Gary had noted that you didn't have time to, to, to go back and read all of the previous zoning ordinances, so I, I took one that I had in my office readily available and ha- and happened to find that section still in there.
And, and there's no question, based upon what you've observed, that the shed is sitting within the setback?
Based upon, I'm only basing it on our survey, yes.
Mr. Chair, just as to the point of submitting evidence after the fact. If, my suggestion is if the witness has evidence now, if he needs to go make a copy, do that now, if it's something that can't be obtained until the morning, this would, this matter would have to be, remain open.
I agree with that.
Just a procedural issue.
Yep.
If it's something to be submitted now, great, but if it can't be, this matter would have to be, uh, continued to a date certain and remain open.
I, I agree with that. If, if he has to submit something post this hearing, we need to keep it open.
Fairness dictates, Mr. Gary, you have an opportunity to see that and of course respond, and this is, again, assuming that it can't be submitted right now.
Yeah, and again, I just wanna, you know, confirm that I still don't know what form of relief this is even gonna require, I can give you what the setbacks would have been at that time, um, but, you know, without knowing whether it's, uh, on the line, a foot over the line, or a foot shy of the line, uh, I think that still needs to be determined.
I think if I, if I understand what you're saying is that that, that one-third, um, of the setback, if that applied back then, whatever the setback was, and let's just say it was sixty feet, you're saying it would have to be at least twenty feet back from the property?
That's correct. And in order, if this, I don't know if they're gonna be, are they appealing, uh, possibly a variance, or would that be considered a separate item, or? Just an appeal? Okay, all right, but I will get that information.
Can I ask you a question, too?
Sure.
What do you do in the circumstance that the neighbor is, what, how do you figure out whether it's on the property line or not? Where, where is the burden to, to that?
That's a good question. Uh, I was provided a, a class-one survey showing that it, uh, you know, not a very clear class-one survey, 'cause like I said, it was done for the purpose of a whole nether issue, not anything to do with the shed, um, uh, probably a further class-one survey would need to be done to, to, to find out exactly what the, uh, violation is, or the encroachment is, um, if, if they wanna keep it there.
And do, do you have any record of a building permit being pulled for this shed?
No. No, we, we don't have, our records don't go back that far, unfortunately.
From two thousand three?
Uh, I believe they said it was prior even to that.
That, he, we just had testimony that he thought it was two thousand three.
Two thousand three? I mean, we looked at the records, we didn't have anything in there, and a lot of times, uh, sheds, and especially if it was, didn't meet the minimum requirement, wouldn't even have required a permit. They would have required to comply with zoning, but it, they wouldn't necessarily have had to, uh, submit a building permit because of the size.
If it was under sixty-four square feet?
That's correct.
But if it was above, then they would have.
That's correct.
But also too, then they would have also had to, uh, go by the setbacks.
Yeah, they still would have had to comply with the setback regulations, yes.
It seem, it seems like a very small shed, do we know the square footage, 'cause it's, from the road, it looks very small.
So would not have required a permit at that time?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have a question, um, and I'm not sure if this is gonna end up being relevant, but I'm, I'm pretty confused by, um, whether or not the shed is over the property line, and, and I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, isn't there a different way of getting relief for that? Because, I, I mean, I imagine, you know, once the survey was done and they, you know, the, the, the abutters found out that the shed could be a little bit over the property line, they probably wanted to make sure that that was, was removed, or their property line was clear, um, but isn't there a different, isn't there another path to get relief that way? I mean, that, that's not zoning.
Well, I think the assertion...
I mean, that's not us, 'cause...
Yeah, I think the...
That would be an easement, like, figuring out, I mean, are we sure that the actual deed did not contain an easement, or? Okay. I, I'm just trying to, there's, there's other legal issues here that...
Yeah, I think the assertion...
I mean, you may have to be forced to get that relief first before you come into zoning.
Yeah, I think if that was the case, that certainly would hold true, but I think the case is that the, the shed is actually over the property line onto the neighboring property.
Right, which is, which, if that's the case, there's...
Well, you can't get relief for something on somebody else's property, uh, I mean...
You may be speaking of adverse possession, or some type of trespass action, yes.
Yeah, you're gonna, somebody's gonna have, you're gonna have to determine that, a title company, title insurance...
I'm sorry.
I mean, whatever title insurance was issued, when they bought the property, they can probably, you know, go against the title comp, there's, there's, there's other ways of resolving this.
I think you're absolutely right, those are all within the jurisdiction of the Superior Court, this board unfortunately doesn't have jurisdiction to decide those matters.
I, I guess, no, I understand, I just don't know if it's, if, which has to happen first, sorry.
Well, I, I think the only issue before the board on this appeal is whether or not this shed was, is, is or was, was required to be set back from the property line in accordance with, with whatever the law was... the law was at the time that it was put in place, and that's it. I mean, I think, I think it's a pretty narrow view that we have to look at in this proceeding.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as you had mentioned before, to possibly continue this matter, so I can confirm what, in fact, what those setbacks were, so you can then definitively know that it was in violation.
If you find the setbacks, could you also establish what the current shed is in reference to those setbacks? In other words, if you tell us it's a two feet or three feet?
I don't, I wouldn't be able to know that unless, unless a Class 1 survey is done, and I'm not sure either party is willing to do that.
So I sense we'd still be in the same position. I'm sorry, I just would sense we'd be in the same position. We'd have a rule, but we wouldn't have definitive proof whether it's close or not close.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have a sneaking suspicion that Mr. Landry is going to tell us where that shed is or is not when he makes his presentation, so maybe if we just get to that point, we'll know.
All right. Do you have any further questions? All right. I'll sit over here just in case you guys need to come back up. Thanks.
We want to let Mr. Attorney Garahy rebut this and then have Mr. Landry. I, I, I mean, it's an unusual procedure.
It is. I think it's within the discretion of the chair.
Does anyone have a problem with Mr. Garahy rebutting that or presenting whatever he has in opposition to that? Okay, go ahead.
The only thing I would, would say, I think the town has the burden. They haven't, we don't know where the setback is. That's what we heard tonight, and I think, you know, I know we can come back and give me another violation tomorrow, but we're here on appeal, and we haven't heard where the setbacks are, whether there is any or none. On the issue of whether it's on or four inches over the property line, that's a civil matter, might be by adverse possession. They filed a notice of intent to dispute adverse possession because it might be a couple of inches over the property line, but that's not within the jurisdiction of this board. The only thing that's in the jurisdiction of this board is if there's a violation of zoning ordinance, which is set back so many feet from the property line, which we don't know how many feet it's required to be set back.
Do you agree that because that, I'm just trying to, for expedient sake here for what you just stated, do you disagree with the board after Mr. Landry makes his presentation from continuing this so that we can find out what the law was at that time?
That's within your discretion, I think, to get, to get a continuance. I'm not sure I should agree to that because I think the burden has not been shown tonight, and I think it's in my best interest to ask for a dismissal now because there's been not sufficient evidence presented as to where the setbacks are, but, and I do object to Mr. Landry testifying.
Subject to your objection, Mr. Landry, you can make a presentation.
Yes, we can agree to disagree, his lawyers do, but I, I respect Mr. Garahy's position. Mr. Pimentel did a great job outlining this, so I'm not going to belabor the point. There were dimensional regulations in place. My client was just recalling back in 2008 when he put a shed on his property in Gibson Ave. It was at least 10 feet. He required a building permit at the time. So I think that's a very important part of the analysis, you know, what, what the rules were in effect at the time. I do disagree with Mr. Gary. I think when you have a zoning violation, the onus is on the petitioner to put enough evidence in the record to show that the use was lawful at the time it was constructed. It's not on the town. The town has already made a determination, and respectfully, it's this board's position to find whether or not Mr. Pimentel was justified in issuing that decision, and the onus is on the petitioner to show that he was incorrect. I think Mr. Pimentel has testified pretty clearly that there were setbacks in, in effect at the time that the shed was constructed, whether it's 1998, 20 years ago, whatever it was. Your ordinance clearly has a provision that requires building permits for both principal structures and accessory structures. That was in existence at the time. I recognize that there may be exceptions to that, but notwithstanding the requirement of a building permit, there were certainly setbacks. I have photographs in a Class 1 survey that show that this shed is over the line. It, it clearly is. There are private property issues for the Superior Court. I don't disagree with that. This is a zoning issue. We filed the request for enforcement action because it's, clearly no town would have an ordinance that allows any structure to be on top of a property line, let alone over it. So all we're really asking here, or what we've asked Mr. Pimentel to do, which he has done, is issue a zoning violation, violation of the setbacks. Anything above and beyond that, we understand is for another forum. But there were setbacks in place at the time the shed was constructed, and respectfully, I think the onus is on the petitioner to show that it was lawfully constructed at the time it was, that it was constructed, whether that's with the building permit, that it complied with the setbacks, whatever that may be. I think the burden is on him to demonstrate that, and I, as I understand it, Mr. Pimentel is going to provide the board with proof that there were setbacks in effect at the time. I'll add one more wrinkle for your deliberations, that the section of the ordinance that we cited that was in existence at the time that the shed was allegedly constructed, which is 7.3, there's also a requirement that the total lot coverage for principal structures and accessory structures cannot exceed the total lot coverage for the district. That's 10% here. I have a copy of the tax assessor records that compile all of the structural lot coverage that applies to this lot. It's well in excess of 10%. So I, I would add one more thing to this section, and this was in my letter in the request for the enforcement under the same section. The structural lot coverage should be limited to roughly 2,000 square feet, which is, this is about a half acre lot. This is well in excess of that, so I think that the board should also consider whether or not, when the shed was constructed, if it complied with the structural lot coverage requirement, which has been 10% for, as far as I can see, the last 20 years. I was able to go back as far as the early 2000s and verify that, and I do have copies of those ordinances back as early as 20, 2010 and 2008, but they haven't changed from what's in the ordinance today. The language is the same. So again, the lot's about a half acre. 10% would be roughly 2,047 square feet. Look, and there's two sheds on this property, by the way. I, I want to make sure we, we understand that there's two sheds. One is not, or may be in the, in the setback. I'm not sure if it is. The one we're referring to is the one to the rearmost of the property. That's clearly on and over, over the line, but there are two sheds, and the structural lot coverage is roughly 2,600 square feet. So I think that's an important consideration as part of this violation is whether or not the shed also complied with structural lot coverage. That's it. I, I'm not sure if I'll be allowed to submit the photographs, but I do have photographs of the property stakes showing the shed over the line. I'm happy to provide those. I'm not sure it's necessary. We do have a Class 1, but if the chairman would allow it, I'm happy to present those to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have any problem with submission of whatever information you have that is going to assist us. And while, while you're doing that, Attorney Landry, it's, I take it it's your position that you're asking this board to affirm the decision of the building official, correct?
That is correct.
All right, and, and in that same vein, his notice of violation did not address the other issue that you brought up, so do you agree that we're kind of constrained to, to make any determination with respect to that? We can only rule on what he, what the actual notice of violation was?
Yeah, so that's fair. I, I would say that the notice of violation was for this section, which includes this language, so I'm not sure if it's a stretch to say that you, you can't consider it because it is the section. I cited it in my letter, and the section he was violated from includes the structural lot coverage provision. If the board cannot entertain it, then I'll send another letter to Mr. Pimentel to, to review that and potentially issue another violation procedurally. I'm happy to do it either way, but I, I do think because he cited that section, it's, it's certainly relevant to this board's review. So with that, I provided Mr. Gary, I'm sorry. Those are for you. Yeah, I did provide Mr. Gary with copies of the photos. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity.
Gary, you have anything to respond to that?
No, the, the only thing I would say is it was not, it was not in the notice of violation with respect to lot coverage. I will say that Mr. Landry did indicate that the coverages have not changed. They have changed by operation of law, where there's the substandard lots of record are now subject to portionality standards, both with respect to side yards and lot coverage requirements. So, so there are, they are changing, and based on the substandard lots of record, substandards. It's an R80 non-conforming lot. There's a provision that says, well, if it's not R80, it should be a lot that conforms. I think that's R20, so it's a bit of a, a calculation to get to where you have to get to. Was that confusing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, counsel, I mean, I, I think given the fact that there may be a submission subsequent to this hearing of an additional document that we ought to consider continuing this so that Mr. Gary can rebut that if-
I agree. I suggest, recommendation is you continue to adate certain. Wayne is going to provide that to the board. I also suggest he provide copies to counsel so that they have that at the same time the board receives it.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move to continue to October 23rd.
For a second? All in favor?
Can I, I'm an alternate. Can I, can I make the motion? I'm an alternate. I forgot.
No.
I cannot. I am sorry.
Yeah, you're an alternate. All right.
Make a motion.
Yeah. Second? Second it? All right, all in favor? So David made the motion?
I am voting tonight. Okay. All right.
So you're mo, you can make the motion?
I can make the motion. I affirm, I reaffirm the motion.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Who was he?
All right.
Okay, all right. I thought we talked about this in the beginning. That's why I'm confused. We talked about it in the beginning, and she said I don't vote. That's why I was confused.
Why, I didn't realize you were the fifth one to you. I, I always, I thought John was the first alternate, but she's the first.
I'm the first alternate.
Got it.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
All right. The next matter is D3 Parrillo, plat R2, lot 350. On up. Yeah, but we gotta address something before, is that-
Are you the only new attorneys?
No.
Then you won't need to be sworn in.
Okay.
Yes.
Ronald J. Parrillo, P-A-R-R-I-L-L-O, the second.
Angela J. Parrillo, P-A-R-R-I-L-L-O.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, is it Ronald?
Yes.
That's not the picture. That's not our property.
I'm sorry?
That's not our property.
Okay, we'll get to that in one second. So ju, just before we start with this hearing, and as a courtesy to both of you, we don't want you to get caught in the legal crosshairs of what's going on in the Rhode Island Supreme Court, which there is a case that just came down, which directly impacts your application, and if your application were to be denied tonight, you would be precluded, I think, for what, one year from refiling. So the, the, the case that came down from the Supreme Court almost, well, I'll let Mr. Salitro address it. It's almost on all fours with this.
There's a number of lawyers in the room. I know there's a number of questions as to whether or not a case that just came down from the Supreme Court is exactly on point, exactly similar to your set of circumstances. So I think the chair is giving you the courtesy of letting you know that. We say that you're not represented by counsel because without even vetting the merits of this matter, the board, just in simply fairness, wouldn't want you to have an adverse decision against yourself tonight without vetting that with counsel. How do I do, Mr. Chair?
Well, yeah, it would have been nice to know ahead of time.
Yeah, we weren't aware of this.
Go ahead. Could you repeat what you just said so that-
My wife is just saying it would have been nice if we'd known this ahead of time, because we just-
We would have gotten counsel.
We would have, we would have came here prepared with counsel and, you know, been able to make this meeting worthwhile as opposed to just, you know, we, I mean, we appreciate you letting us know that. Thank you so much. So if we, do we continue it if we'd like to, or is that what?
Yeah, and that's what I think we'd like to give you the option of. I mean, this case just came down from the Rhode Island Supreme Court, so by the time it gets disseminated amongst all of us, you know, weeks have gone by or whatever. So we, we would entertain a motion by you to continue it. That would allow you time to just seek legal counsel to, to see if there's a, a way to get around this decision, rather than you not be able to come back for a year, and we don't want that to happen.
So if it doesn't get approved tonight, you're saying that it's a year before we can actually even come back for appeal? Is that what?
No, it would just, we would just continue it for a, a month or two months or whatever your pleasure is so that you can seek legal counsel to understand how this Supreme Court decision would, would impact your, your, your case. That, that's all. Everything, I think, I don't know, Nick, can everything just stay the same? If we just continue it, they don't have to notify Butters and all that?
Well, that's my question. Has it been opened? Because it's open, it's continued. It hasn't been opened yet.
I don't, I, I would take the position it hasn't been opened. I'm kind of forewarning them before they give any-
I agree. I agree. But regardless, we'll defer to a date certain so that public would have notice of that.
So it'd be, it would be deferred till October 23rd?
Okay, so we wouldn't have to re-notify? And do you think that's sufficient amount of time to obtain an attorney?
Well, that's another question I was just going to ask. Do you want to, like, go out two months? I mean, we want to do what's going to be most convenient for you so that you, you can have a meaningful hearing here rather than us looking, we have a Supreme Court case that basically would not, would-
Can you reference that case so that we have that information?
It's, here, I'll give you my copy of it. How's that?
That would be great.
So we know we're speaking about what we spent-
We've been blindsided tonight. We had no idea.
We had no idea this was going to-
We thought we were good.
Normally you would been, except the Supreme Court decided to change all of that, so take, take, take a look at that.
See, it was specific too. You said it was on all fours for our property, so we'll take a look at it and then continue.
Would you like two months to?
If we decide to do the October date and we cannot find an attorney in that short amount of time, can we defer it again at that point?
I think they can, right? They can come back and ask for another?
Then we'd prefer to do that.
Yeah, then we'd prefer October then.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sure.
Wayne, I had seen your email, I believe, where you were asking, planning, are we going to amend our ordinances in light of this case? Is there any plans yet to do that?
As of today, I'm not quite sure. If that's the case, mine would probably answer that.
Mr. Trentis, so we, there's been no official determination to amend the ordinance. We, we are not even sure how it affects our ordinance as it stands.
I have a lot of questions, but I don't think you're going to be able to answer them tonight, so thank you. Are you all set?
Oh, yeah. I'll make a, someone's a motion to continue to October 25th? 23rd?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
But it's not a non-conforming lot, is it?
I think it is. The lot's only 92.00. I think it's R10. It's 10,000. It's less than that or not?
That's 15,000.
Uh, the next matter is Nero. Jack, you need some time to pick up another case?
Coincidentally, I had the exact same case coming before this board next month. A knockdown, a non-conforming lot, but I was hoping to get some clarification from Wayne about if we were to keep up a wall and part of the foundation, would that be considered a knockdown, which would allow me to proceed next month? So that's my call.
All right.
Sleeping dogs lie.
Floor is yours.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Jack McGreen for the applicant. Twenty-one Garden City Drive, Cranston, Rhode Island, oh-two-nine-two-oh. Applicant and owner is Leah Nero as trustee of the Leah Nero Trust. Leah is present to answer any questions that you might have. Property is located at eighty Onondaga Road in Bonnet and is located in R ten zone with a lot area of fifteen thousand square feet. The applicant proposes to construct a second floor addition onto an existing garage containing two bedrooms and two bathrooms, along with a hundred and ninety-eight square foot second floor deck. Do you have our site plan yet, Greg? So, um, the bedrooms will be accessed by an exterior staircase. The existing garage is a legal non-conforming building as it is fifteen feet, three inches from the rear lot line. Twenty-four feet's required. It's six foot, ten inches from the left side line, twelve feet is required. And eighteen feet and two and a half inches in height and sixteen feet is permitted. Those are all the current dimensional requirements. The proposal is to keep the same footprint on the first floor of the garage, but cantilever the second floor by two feet from the rear and the side yard so that the garage would be thirteen feet, three inches from the side and four feet, ten inches from the rear, requiring ten foot, nine inches of relief from the left side and six foot, one inches of relief from the rear. The proposal adds an additional six feet in the garage to bring the height to twenty-three feet, eleven inches, requiring six feet, one inches of height relief, along with a special use permit because we're going above the sixteen feet that's permitted. And so in addition to the normal dimension relief, we need a special use permit. Applicants also seeking two-hundred-and-sixty square feet of floor area, which could have been obtained by modification, but since we can't pick and choose, we gotta come in or not come in, even though we're not asking for a lot of far relief, the two-sixty would be within the modification, we're still here because we have other things we're requesting. Bedroom count is going from four bedrooms to six bedrooms, requiring a special use permit to ensure that the project meets the objective standards of three hundred square feet of pocket space per bedroom, which it does. Finally, the application is seeking hardscape relief, I believe it's four percent. That's primary, primarily driven by the, the need to access the stairs and the landing to the second floor. Let's see. That's it for the request relief. I do have Peter Bosco here with me, who is the architect, architectural design engineer that can take you through the plans and answer any of your questions. If you do wanna come up, and I have a pointer, I think you have to be sworn in.
Swear in the witness, please.
Do you sound, Ms. Redd, that the question you're about to get, the whole truth and nothing, but the truth, so I'll be back?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Peter Boscio, B O S C I O.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as, as Jack mentioned, this, this, this footprint represents the existing outline of the one-sto, one-story garage with the existing loft space. The outline for the second floor extends that footprint out on all north, south, east and west side by two feet to increase that footprint, twenty-four by twen, roughly twenty-four by twenty-four. It's a single bedroom, a single bedroom, a single bathroom, bathroom, common shower area for both, for the family's use. There's a deck and a stair off the, off the deck for egress and entrance up to the upper level.
That's proposed, right?
That is all proposed, correct. Yeah, that's better. So right now, the existing, the proposed is twenty-four feet, just, just above twenty-four feet. The existing house, which is this line right here, is approximately twenty-five feet. So this addition is currently not higher than the existing residence, but it is higher than the existing garage line, which was roughly about sixteen feet to the ridge. This represents the south elevation, the garage door in the same location, egress windows up on the second floor, shingle roof, shingle side, clapboard siding to match the existing house.
Do you have a next, next screen?
Okay. That one, that, this is the view that faces west. This does, this represents the bathroom windows and the shower windows, flank side of the garage facing the west neighbor.
And the next screen?
This is the north view, again with the, this represents the second bedroom set of windows, the stairs coming down off the side, the relocation of the existing shower with a, a metal roof, and the proposed additions off the, what would be the west and the east side.
If you don't have any questions for the architect, I'd like to bring up the applicant.
I have a question. What is the overall height excluding the cupola?
Excluding the cupola, the overall height is twenty... Twenty-four foot two right now. The existing house is approximately twenty-five feet.
It's twenty-three eleven.
Yeah, twenty-three eleven, right.
Twenty-three feet, eleven inches.
Thank you.
Which would require a six foot, one inch relief.
Right, yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Has had a question, Wayne, I noticed in the, I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, but the planning board recommendation was to change the roof line a little bit? Is that... Am I mistaken?
Yeah, we understand their recommendation, but it's still going to be lower than the, lower than the...
Existing.
Existing height of the, of the house. And also, let me show you a picture I took. This is my walking, so I walk by this house every day. So here's some pictures.
Alright, let's mark those as exhibit one to this.
You made this part, I think that was the old picture, submit as part of my package. But you'll see in that picture that, you know, the house is on a road that is inclined, so as you walk up that road, if you're walking, your heart rate goes from about eighty-five to about one-twenty-eight by the time you get to the top of the, top of the road there. And so the height of that is not going to interfere with the scenic view of the house behind them. That, that house is substantially higher than this house right here. This house, I mean, the house, you're allowed, as you know, a thirty-foot, you know, thirty feet in height. The house isn't even thirty feet. What's, what's the height in the house right now?
Twenty-five foot to the ridge.
It's twenty-five to the ridge right now, and the garage isn't gonna exceed the twenty-five feet. So, and the other thing, you know, we were considering at one point was perhaps attaching the garage to the house. And if we did that, then we could go up the full thirty feet because it would be part of the house. So, you know, so quite frankly, if I was in a budding neighbor and I had a concern about it, I'd rather have them put the addition over the garage rather than attach it to the house because then it would be higher, so. But we, we didn't do that for other reasons as well, but that, that was, you know, one of the options that they could've proceeded under if they wanted to.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the witness?
What is the height from the bottom of the second floor to the, to the ceiling? What's the ceiling height on the second floor gonna be?
We have a plate height of eight feet, so the ceiling height in that, in the overall is eight feet.
In up, is up feet?
On the living bed, the bedroom area is eight feet, yes.
Okay, and what is, is it, so it's just a, a flat ceiling, a straight ceiling?
No, this is actually, it's got a pitch, the ceilings are pitched to follow the slope of the roof in this area.
So there's cathedral ceilings up top?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It starts at eight feet and goes up.
So what is the, so what is the height of the ceiling?
Overall height?
In the middle of it?
Wasn't expecting that, sorry. It might be on the, uh...
The, the point of the question is...
The height is... It's probably closer to ten feet to the ridge, the, inside the house. So what happens is the...
Can you bring up the...
Inside the roof, it's got a...
Can you, can you bring up the truss? I think it's a couple sheets up.
Eight-four-one sheet, the eight-four-one joint.
Keep on going?
Keep going. The other way. Sorry. Couple more?
One more?
That's all? Oh, that was it? Okay. So...
I can show, you know what? Let me just...
Yeah, you can show.
You can see the tr, there's the truss.
Mark that as exhibit two.
Approximately, I would say it's approximately ten feet to that high point, nine-six to ten. I said it's approximately ten, nine foot-six to ten feet to that high point.
But the ceiling's eight feet and then the truss takes up another two feet, roughly?
Yeah.
So I guess the point of the question is, is can you not have the cathedral ceilings and the truss would come down? And, and the, the overall height of the building would come down a little bit?
It's not technically cathedral, it's just, it's the bottom, it's following the slope of the, the truss. The bottom, so, yeah, to answer your question, it could be a flat ceiling, but it, it, you never, you don't see the volume inside the house, inside, exterior to that.
The, I mean, the, the planning board's recommendation was to reduce the, the height. So I'm trying to figure out if, if that's a possible, like, that's a structural possibility.
What's the pitch? What's the present pitch on the house right now?
Five-twelve.
The five-twelve pitch? If you went down any below a four-twelve pitch, then the whole height, I believe, would come down. I think you'd go to three-twelve, I think. Don't you lose height or does that not apply to its unnecessary structure? No, yeah, you would lose height. I don't know the number right off the top of my head, but I can, I can double check. Yeah, so...
We could. We could also, we could also reduce the plate heights if we had...
I mean, we could not go down to a four-twelve pitch, but anything below that, I mean, I think aesthetically, it looks better at a five-twelve pitch. And like I said, to me, the purpose of maybe going to a four-twelve pitch, if someone wanted to preserve their view, but whether it's four-twelve or five-twelve, the house is taller than the, but this isn't gonna be any taller than the house, and it's in line with the house, if you can see the, the picture there. But yes, to answer your question, we could go down.
You could go down, okay. And then I just have a question on the cantilevers. What is the, what is the necessity for the cantilevers as well? Like, what, what is the, what do you hope to accomplish that? You need more footage, more?
He was giving them the bedroom space, yes.
Okay.
On the se, on the second floor.
If you didn't do the cantilevers, would you need the same relief, the side, the setback?
We wouldn't need the setback relief.
You would not need the, if you, if you moved it in? Okay.
It's existing non-conforming lot, so if we, if we were staying right at the line, they count it if you go out, even if you cantilever, they still count that towards the setbacks, so...
Right.
We'd be out, if we could maintain, if we maintained the line, then we wouldn't be asking for the dimension relief. But, but we're trying to keep it in the same footprint as the garage and, and therefore that's why we're going out on the second floor only.
I'm sorry, explain that again? So, oh, you're trying to keep with the same footprint?
Same footprint.
But if you went straight up and didn't have the cantilever?
Right, but then we would lose...
You wouldn't need the relief.
We would lose two feet of bedroom space, right?
Yeah.
So what's, what's the dimensions of the bedroom right now?
The bedroom's a twenty-four...
The width is really the...
The width is approximately... Yeah, twelve, twelve feet wide, exactly.
Yeah.
Twelve feet wide.
They're not...
Of the bedrooms? Each bedroom is twelve feet? So it's twenty-four?
Twelve feet wide, yeah. Twelve to the left, twelve to the right. But it's, it's a pretty modest sized room.
So it's a twelve, twelve by twelve bedrooms?
Twelve by twelve, yes.
Basically, it's what we're trying to buy out?
Right.
So it's twelve, two twelve by twelves?
Twelve by twelves.
And then there's some bathroom space?
They're divided by a solid wall, and there's a bathroom for each, no kitchen or, it's not an ADU, it's just, just bedrooms.
It's purely bedrooms, yes.
Which is funny because if it was an ADU, then we wouldn't have to worry about far because you, but they're not interested in putting a kitchen up there, it's just for their grandchildren, so they're just putting beds up there.
And I guess that was gonna be my next question. What is the reason to add two more bedrooms to a four-bedroom house?
I can bring the applicant up, she can give you a...
Okay. I can, I can hold that question.
May I have one more question for the architect? So how will you access the two bedrooms? Are they exterior doors?
Yeah, through the slide, um... Go back to the floor, you just had, you know, so it's a stair, set of stairs, exterior stairs up to a, a common deck, and this is the entrance door into both of those bedrooms, a slider. And we have egress windows for the bedrooms and all the bathrooms.
And those, those windows require, I'm assuming they require my code?
Yeah, it's a bedroom, it's a general, it's a, it's a bedroom.
Like they're not joined or anything?
Yeah, so this, this is a slide down, you get into this bedroom, slide down to this bedroom, down the stairs to back down to grade.
Okay.
Excuse me.
And then when you look at this area right there, that's just open area?
That's the back area to get into the, into the, that one bathroom for that bedroom and to get into that bathroom for that, excuse me, that bedroom.
Okay, so then here to here to here to here is twelve, twelve by twelve, is what you're saying?
Uh, no, this is twelve feet, this is probably, I'd say closer to... This is probably like, twenty-four, it's probably twenty feet big, twelve by twenty is the bedroom size.
So they're not twelve by twelve? This, 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 and this is twelve by twenty? It's not twelve by twelve?
I believe what he's saying is, this, this bedroom is twelve feet by twelve feet, this one's twelve feet by twelve feet. This from here to here is twenty feet?
Twenty-four.
So that's the, that's the hallway that gets you into the bathroom? The size of the bedroom itself, from here to here, is that twelve feet? Just right here, from here to there?
Oh, that is, I didn't expect that question, sorry. It's eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen, so it's tall by eighteen. That common area is tall by eighteen for both bedrooms, because the bathrooms are six feet wide.
Okay, thank you.
Should've made a bigger print.
Anything else?
Can't read it.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Next witness.
This is exhibit two. I do. Leah Nero, last name is N E R O.
And your first name?
Leah, L I A.
Leah, so how long have you owned the property before?
We bought it in eighty-eight and our first summer was in nineteen eighty-nine.
And do you live there full-time?
No, we're summer residents only. We live in Illinois in the winter.
Have you ever rented the property out before?
Never.
What's your intended use of those bedrooms over the garage?
I have five grandchildren between twenty-four and thirteen, and now some of them are bringing significant others. We had a bunk room built in the original house that held all five grandkids and they've outgrown that.
And, house, does the house have a basement?
No, it's on a slab.
Slab on grade? So the questions I have for the applicant?
Questions from the board members?
Not of the applicant, no.
So, this, this cantilever is still bothering me a little bit. Is it absolutely to have, to be able to use this the way you wanna use it and enjoy it? Do the bedrooms need to be twelve by eighteen?
Well, they're not. They're twelve by twelve. The bathrooms are six feet, so you can't have a bathroom smaller than six feet.
Okay. I guess I'm not remember, the testimony was that the area of those bedrooms...
Can you blow that up so I can just read the numbers?
Let's see the numbers, yeah, let's make sure we have... Yeah, let's make sure we have the right.
The bedroom's total square footage is 209 square feet each.
Here to there, to there, to there.
209 square feet.
I have a question.
The bedroom's 209 square feet. Both 209 square. So is the next question.
It's like the bedroom's basically 17. Now that has just been there, I apologize. The bedroom's basically 17 feet long because the bathroom is 6'10" by 12 feet wide.
So this is 12?
That dimension, the horizontal.
Can you go back? So this is 12?
Yes. And that, that cross dimension is 17.
And this is 17?
Yes.
Okay, so.
12 by 17. The actual bed area, we have bed area. Sorry about that.
So I guess my, my question is to be able to make use of this for what you want to use it for, is there a reason that you could not get rid of the cantilevers and make the bedrooms a little bit, you know, a little bit smaller? Or cantilevers on a couple of sides? The sides of that you need to, you know, the sides that you need to.
All right, go back to the drawing board and attach it to the house and get it exactly the way I want it. But I thought we would do it this way because it'd be less cumbersome to my neighbor. But I'm, I'm willing to move, to move the whole garage forward and attach it to the house. And then I, I would have the same space.
I have a question.
Well, to answer your question, could she reduce it? Yes, she absolutely could. But as you know, that, you know, we're no longer required to ask for the least amount of relief necessary, which we're not asking. We could, we could, we could drop it to a 4 by 12 pitch and we could reduce the square footage. It's still a modest sized, modest sized bedroom. It's 12 by 18 feet. So we're not asking for the least relief necessary. We're just asking, asking for the relief so that she can fully enjoy, you know, the two bedrooms in a reasonably sized bedroom, you know, bigger than a 12 by 12 square. 12 by 18 is the bedroom.
There's a closet there that comes out.
I, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I think, there's closets in the bedroom?
Yeah.
Could you, could you want to point out where the closets are?
All this time you've been talking.
Yep. You gotta push that button right there.
Right here.
Yep.
Okay, this, that is a closet. And that is a closet.
And that's, right.
In the room.
So those closets are, what's the depth of those closets?
Four feet.
Four feet? So now you're at 12 by 12 plus four, it gets you up to the 16. So four feet of that 16 feet is closet space.
Or dressing space. Or what?
Dressing space.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Nero. So we're talking a lot of specifics about the square footage here, but I'd like to ask you a question about increasing from the four bedrooms to the six bedrooms.
Okay.
And I understand, I've got a big family and grandkids and the like, so I understand your reasons for wanting the two extra bedrooms, but we are constrained by what the zoning ordinance says and we cannot grant a special use permit unless there's evidence, and I'm quoting section five, that the granting of the special use permit will substantially serve the public convenience and welfare.
I can use those questions.
No, I'd like to hear from.
I don't know, I don't understand the question.
You can't get evidence, sir.
That's the legal, but that's the legal question you're asking.
Put it in layman's, put it in layman's term because I don't understand the question.
Okay. In order for us to grant the special use permit, you have to demonstrate by evidence, and you're giving testimony here, that the public convenience and welfare will be served by our granting your special use permit, meaning allowing you to go from four to six bedrooms.
If I.
Counsel, do you want to interject?
No, I do want to interject because going from four to six bedrooms, that's the special use permit provision.
Yes.
That's nothing to do with the, what you need to prove to show the necessity for dimensional relief. So there's two different things going on here.
Okay.
The bedroom count, they have an objective standard, which we meet. Section, you have to go under section, let's see, under the section. Objective standards of 300 square feet. I believe that's in section 12 of the zoning ordinance.
All right, I'm looking at this in the report that we have in front of us, project summary on page four.
Those standards you're looking at is for dimension relief, I mean, the special use for a height variance. There's like three, two special uses we're asking for. One, we're asking for three things. We get special use for the bedroom count.
Yes.
Which we meet by the objective standards. We need a special use to go above the 16 feet in height.
Yes.
And those are the standards that you're talking about. The height, that those standards that you were talking about specifically, you mentioned section 18.1, which is the standards that you need to look at when you're talking about health, safety, general welfare, that would allow you to raise the height of that house. That's section 18.1.
Okay. So I am looking at the summary of the report and the zoning regulations that talk about special use permits. Do we agree that you need a special use permit to go from four to six bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying the standard, our standard of review does not include what the staff has put in our report on page four of five that says the granting, the zoning board of review may not grant a special use permit unless it finds evidence to the satisfaction of the following standards that is entered into the record of the proceedings and then jump down five, that the granting of the special use permit will substantially serve the public convenience and welfare.
I believe that's referring to the height section relative to section 18.1.
Where, where does it say that though in the special use permit review?
I have it. Let me just get the statute out here for you.
Jack, why don't you just put on the record what the objective standard is that's set forth in the ordinance so that it's in the record?
Yeah, so, yeah, so let me just read the, I did make a copy of the ordinance.
I don't have evidence. I don't have the same evidence.
Give me one moment.
Certainly.
So the standard to go from anything exceeding four bedrooms is you have to have at least 300 square feet of parking space per bedroom. And I believe there's a section in there about being able to pull out in a forward direction. And as the staff report noted, we met the objective standard. Now, they're referring to, when they're referring to the special use provisions of, the other special use provisions, they relate to section 18.1, which if you give me one second, I will, I did make a copy of that statute. It's escaping me. Give me a second. Copy the statute.
What is the special use permit section? Okay, this is a good view. I understand.
It'll be on the last, it'll be on the bottom. That's where it will be.
So Jack, just so you're aware, in the staff report, what's referenced is section 12.23.
Exactly.
Development standards for homes exceeding four bedrooms, special use permit.
So, right, I was just looking for the objective standards that were, and I had them.
Thank you. 12.23. I think you gave some other paperwork here with a picture. Are you looking for this?
No, it was, oh, was it attached?
It was, when, it was underneath this picture.
No, I don't, I don't think that's, that's something.
Is that yours?
I think those are mine.
No, these are mine.
Oh, there we go.
Counsel, I just want to see if we're on the same page. I am reading the code, section 12.23, that talks about, you're talking about the development standards for homes exceeding four bedrooms, but we have some other language here in our staff report and I'm trying to find the citation to that. Brian, can you help me out? Which section did you quote here?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to figure that out right now. So typically in our staff reports, these are generalized standards for, for the granting of a special use permit. The, the standards that Jack is, Mr. McGreen is currently referencing are specific to section 12.23 for the development standards of a home exceeding four bedrooms.
Correct, but they have to be, it seems to me they have to be read together because otherwise anybody with enough square footage for a driveway would automatically be able to go from four to six bedrooms, correct? So we have to meet the other standard and staff counsel can correct me, we also have to meet the other standard for a special use permit? Thank you. Sorry. What's not that, it's not that confusing. We don't have a table of contents in our new, we just got new ordinance books tonight and we don't have a table of contents, I don't think, in this. So I am struggling and I apologize, but I do want to reference the right section. Nope, maybe we did, let's see. I think.
I will say as to the, the height issue, which also requires a special use permit, health, safety and general welfare.
Yeah.
I did do a little research and taller buildings can enhance natural ventilation.
Hold on, stay there.
I'm, I'm sorry. As far as health, taller buildings can enhance natural ventilation, reducing mold and improving indoor air quality, which is especially important in coastal environments. Safety in flood prone areas, and this is pretty close to the water, elevating structures can protect occupants and promote, and property from storm surge and sea level rise. And as to general welfare, increased height can support more bedrooms thereby promoting economic vitality and housing availability in the community. And by building vertically, you can reduce the building footprint which preserves green space.
I'm not disputing you, I'm not saying anything about height. My question was directed to the bedrooms and the general provisions of the special use permit, so.
Well, I, I think on that last one, I did say that, you know, height and increasing the bedroom count can promote economic vitality and housing availability in the community. I mean, it's a larger house, it makes more bedrooms and you'll reduce, you know, you're reducing the footprint by going up too and you're preserving green space, that's for the height, but, you know, more bedrooms is, is, you know, more housing availability in the community.
But she's already said she's not renting. This is for her grandkids, so that's really not.
But that's her house. I mean, she would have to, I think an objector mentioned that, well, why don't you just rent up the street rather than having your grandkids move into your house? I think that was what one of the objectors said. So I'm saying, well, why should they, you know, they'd be able to have more people on the property if they had more bedrooms, which in my opinion is a plus for the community.
Okay. So you're, I understand your argument, what you're saying, the argument that you're making.
Right.
But do you agree with me that one of the standards is that section five, which says the granting of the special use permit will substantially serve the public convenience and welfare? That's part of our standard of review and we can reach, we obviously have to look at the facts and reach a conclusion. I understand and respect your arguments, but you agree that is the standard or part of the standard?
Part of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yes. It just, I mean, for any bedroom increase, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, is but how can a bedroom in someone's individual home ever, if you were to ask that question, ever, you know, you know, help the public out per se, other than in general promoting more living space for the community? If they were to sell the house, somebody can move in here with a larger family. That would serve the public, but on, you know, for, for the public right now, that building's, that, that individual bedroom, no one's going to be sleeping there in the public other than the people that own the house.
And I understand what you're saying, but I guess what's going through my mind is they carved out a very special section to say anything over four bedrooms, okay? Which means we have to look at it a little bit more strictly, we have to scrutinize it a little bit more, and maybe we have to apply the standards more stringently. Because I'm going to assume when, I wasn't involved with this, but I'm going to assume if there was some kind of public policy purpose behind putting this separate section that talks about going from four to six bedrooms? That's the only point I'm making. That's why I want to give your client the opportunity to give us the evidence so we can consider it. And I've heard what you have to say and I thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other place on the property that you could do this where it didn't require something?
Yeah, I, I think that goes towards the, the, the legal argument relative to the, what we have to show to get the dimension relief. Number one, that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique character of the subject land or structure and not the general characteristics of the surrounding areas. The garage, they, you know, it's a legal nonconforming lot of record that kind of dealt that hand. So I think that, that satisfies that requirement. Number two, the applicant took no prior action, so we satisfy that requirement. Number three, the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area and that the addition over the garage is residential in nature and in height 23 feet 11 and scale below the existing house. If the relief request were not approved, they could redesign the improvements by attaching the garage to the main structure, which would also permit the applicant to go up to 30 feet in height and perhaps 34.5 by modification. So, and finally, the hardship that will be suffered by the owner if the variants are not requested amounts to more than a mere inconvenience and that the applicant were required, if they were required to move like you're suggesting, the entire garage as opposed to keeping the existing footprint on the first floor and cancel leaving the second floor by two feet in order to create two additional bedrooms. In that regard, the relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use which the property is supposed to be devoted. So obviously, sure, they could take that old building and they could raise it and they could rebuild it on the other side of the house, but to me, that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. That would be a substantial undertaking.
And was there any consideration of just, it's obviously not a full time home, what about just making the bedrooms where, in the garage?
The reason why they need the garage is because they don't have a basement, so they use the garage for storage and also when they leave, they leave one car, car in Rhode Island when they go back to Pennsylvania. So they use that for storage and for the car.
So Jack, you just outlined the elements of, for obtaining the variance under your application, but.
Right.
I think what the board is struggling with is that in order to go from four to six bedrooms, you also have to meet section 12.23, the special use permit provisions. So I think we need some testimony or something that addresses that from you, whether it be testimony or some argument or something to guide us as to how there's compliance with that, that particular section.
Are you talking about the access to air, light, use, solar access, public access to water bodies, that sort of thing?
No, but if you, in, in the, I mean, you've seen the stat, the project summary that we received, so one of the elements of relief requested says section 12.23, special use permit.
Right.
And it says development standards for homes exceeding four bedrooms. So I think what my sister here was just saying a moment ago is that we need some evidence as to what those, whether there's been compliance with those development standards and on top of that, is it your position or not that the, the elements required to establish a special use permit also apply? In which case, if you look at page four or five of the staff report, it sets forth the, the, you know, information to some degree that's required to be established for us to grant a special use permit. Now granted, some of these don't always apply to every application, but some, some of them clearly do apply to this. Did I get that right?
I think you did. Thank you for summarizing.
I just want to take a look at the.
Yeah, please take your time.
Give me a second. Is it getting warmer in here or is it just me? Oh my gosh.
Well, you should be warm. You should be warm after that last one.
Well, the first one, the site, the site shall conform with the underlying zoning designations or be determined by the zoning enforcement office to be a legal nonconforming building lot. I believe, I believe that was in his denial. It is a legal nonconforming building lot. I mean, the garage, as to the garage, as to the lot itself, it's zoned R10, and it's an R15 zone. So that's, I don't know if I need testimony on that, because that's just illegal, that's, it's 15,000 square feet, and it's in an R10 zone, so I believe we meet number one. That the project meets the definition of a single-family home, it does. I don't think any, no one raised the issue in the denial that it doesn't, in our denial that it, it's not a single-family home. And does not require any additional special use permits or dimensional variances from the zoning ordinance. Where deemed appropriate by the zoning board of review, a property may receive both dimensional variances and special use permits without the necessity of meeting the use variance. So we are here, so you have the right, under the zoning ordinance that was amended a few years ago, to grant a special use permit in combination with dimension of relief, so I believe that is permitted now. Number three, parking, we went over the parking, we meet the requirements of Section 12.2... 12-point? I don't have this...
2.3.
2.3, no, 2.3 is the, I'm talking about the specific criteria for, for parking. We meet that, 300 square feet per, per car. Says the site plan shall comply with FAR requirements of Section 6.4. One of the following additional development standards shall be incorporated into the design structure on lots of less than 5,000 square feet. Well, ours is more than, ours is 15,000 square feet, so we don't have to comply with number four.
Excuse me, may I ask you a question? Is there a copy of this? That we could be...
That's, that's Section 12.23 of the zoning ordinance.
In the middle, if you guys can, we can get close, we can get closer.
It's in your zoning ordinance.
12.231.
If you could just give me a minute, I'd really appreciate it, if I could just catch up where you're at.
I believe that's on page four. If you look at page four, start, it'll say 1, 2, 3, and 4. Those are the, those are the special use requirements besides the specific criteria. Number one, that if you see B, you go down about eight sentences on page four.
Sure, if you could just give me a second, I'm just going to go into here first, and then I'm going to follow along with you here, too, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Do you have any, does anyone have any questions for Mr. McGreen regarding this, his, his addressing Section 12.23 in the context of this application?
I do. Mr. McGreen, how do you, and, and any, if Nick could, Mrs. Slutro could weigh in here, how do you interpret the intro to 12.123? The zoning board of review may grant a special use permit for single-family homes exceeding four bedrooms in the R10, R10A, and R20 zones. And, so, and on legal nonconforming lots of less than 20,000 square feet in R40 and R80. What, what are we working with here?
We're in an R10 zone, and our lot's actually 15,000 square feet, so we have an extra 5,000 square feet to work with.
Okay, so the lot is not nonconforming for that zone?
Lot's not nonconforming, just the garage.
Okay.
Because it's into the setbacks.
Okay.
The building is not conforming.
All right, one more question on, on how you interpret, how you would interpret this, that the project meets the definition of single-family home, which we have, and does not require any additional special use permits or dimensional variances from the zoning ordinance, which we do not have, because the project does require...
Right, but if you read on, it permits this board to grant dimension relief in combination with a special use permit.
Where deemed appropriate by his own board.
Does that seem, does that language seem contradictory to anybody?
Oh, yeah.
It does, it does, it seems, it seems 100% contradictory to me, and when I bring in the McLeod case, where the Supreme Court has talked about the plain and unambiguous language, that we have to look at plain and unambiguous language and not add anything superfluous to it, just look at those words, and that's what we should be doing, I think I'm having a problem with that, and following what you just said, the site plan shall comply with the FAR requirements of Section 6.4B, which you're also asking for a variance from the FAR.
Right, because we're, we're in...
So we've got a lot of, I think you can appreciate what we're struggling with here.
But I believe, I remember I used to come, when I used to come in here before they amended that ordinance, I would always, when I was looking for a dimension relief in combination with a special use permit, I would have to meet the use variance standards, which I could never meet, because you have a house on the, on the lot, so get out of here. But that's why they changed the ordinance, to allow us to apply for a special use permit in combination with dimension of relief, and not have to meet the use variance standards, but only the lower standards, the dimensional standards. So I think even though it says you, you know, you have to, you have to meet the, you're not looking for, you're not looking for a special use permit, but if you are, I believe that's, you have to read both those sentences together, then I can ask for the relief.
This is our great night of legal arguments that need to be made.
Yeah. It's like headaches, though.
Do you have anything else, Mr. McGreen?
Just, I'll, I don't think I addressed number three, that it will not substantially or primally injure the appropriate use of the surrounding property. I mean, all the surrounding property is residential. We're just adding to an existing structure that's on, on site already. To me, any damage is going to be temporary, perhaps during the construction, there might be a little noise, but it's temporary, and once the, once the addition is on, it's tucked in the corner behind the house, and behind this property, I believe it's open space, that might be owned by the state back there. Oceanography School back there. So this, this property only has, you know, the only house that's really impacting, in my opinion, is the house right behind it, and like the applicant said, they thought they were doing the right thing by putting this bedroom over the garage, rather than putting an addition onto the house, because if you pull that addition forward, I think if I, if you take a look at my picture I sent, you'll, you'll see, if, if they pull that garage forward, I would think that that's going to block the view of the person right behind them, in my opinion. I mean, right now, the garage is set behind the house, and the view corridor, like I said, I walk up that road every day, the view corridor, corridor is down, looking at the water, the view corridor is down on Anadega, looking at the beach, so...
Can I ask you one more question? And I don't, I don't, I'm trying to figure out how the planning board got to something here, so I'm going to go to the, maybe you can give me some context, I don't, because I don't really know what they're saying. The planning board has added a condition, if you look at page five of five, that says this property be deed restricted to prohibit the proposed bedrooms, which I'm reading is two bedrooms.
Yes.
From being rented for a period of less than one year. Can you give me some context of what that meant?
Sure. So the planning board, they have a problem with URI students renting in town, and so they were concerned about short-term rentals, and maybe putting, you know, sub-renting that on a weekly or monthly basis, and so we agreed, because they have, they've never rented the property, their only intention would be to have two bedrooms up there. If they really wanted to rent this thing, they would have gone in for an ADU rather than for...
Well, that, that's exactly what I'm trying to get to, and I assume that was the context, but the way they phrased it here, they're talking about the proposed bedrooms. Are you saying you agreed with the planning board to put a deed restriction on the house?
We did. No, not the house, just, just the, just the garage.
How would you rent those anyway?
Yeah, correct, that's why we had no problem agreeing to it.
That's why I'm trying to figure out why this is here.
There's no kitchen, there's no, you know...
Because it would be a boarding house if they were to rent bedrooms that don't have a kitchen.
Correct. I'm assuming it was more of a, you know, Dr. O'Neill is all about enforcement, someone could sneak something in there, but like I say at the planning board all the time, that's an enforcement issue, that's not, that's not a zoning issue.
But wouldn't, I kind of read that, maybe I misinterpreted it, but, you know, in Bonnet, they'll pack them in, so this doesn't sound like the current owner has any interest in renting the property, that this is just a family property. But the decisions that we make here will go on and on. So if they decide to rent it, the next person's going to say, look at the bedrooms I can rent here. And Bonnet Shores is a wonderful place to rent, to college rentals, there's nothing evil about it.
Right.
But if they're going to try and get a departure from what the cap is, what they've written to be the cap for this area of being four bedrooms, and now we're being asked to let there be six, I think that's, I read it, is that, so it can't be rented to, anything less than a year to have six, so they could rent the four if this was to not...
They could rent their house, there was no restrict, that, we didn't agree to restriction on renting the house, although I think the ordinance says, well, you can't rent for any less than, is it 30 days, I believe? Is that, is that what the, is it, it's not effect right now? I think that's, that's what they're looking to do, is put a cap on 30 days, but we agreed to a year for, for the, for the two, for the, for the garage. Again, there's no kitchen there, it's not an ADU, so I don't think we could rent those rooms, because we'd be violating the ordinance, we'd be turning it into a boarding house.
Yeah, I, I think what Christine's getting at is, is that there's just so, that's actually a meaningless, almost a meaningless, you know, even if it is a deed restriction, and it's a nightmare of an enforcement issue, but, but they could rent their house, not that they're going to, because we know, we've heard testimony that they're, they're not going to, but they could rent the house, the four bedrooms, not rent the garage.
Right.
But the garage is there, and people could sleep in the bedrooms in the garage, even if they just rented the house. But there's no lease on the garage, so therefore, you're going to get those rented, rented. I mean, you know, it's, it's, you know what I'm trying, you know what I'm trying to say?
I mean, if it were going to be rented, it would be rented depending on what the ordinance said, if it said up to, I think they're looking at, is it five people they're looking at, no more than five?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen with that, so, I mean, we've had, but, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, any restriction that you put on is, is meaningless. I mean, it's almost meaningless, even if it's in a deed.
Right.
Especially not, not for this family that lives there, but, but what if, you know, if somebody came in later, an investor wanted to come in, and then all they would have to do is just rent the house, and then the other bedrooms would be available for people to sleep in.
Right.
You know, so without the restriction on the house as well, it's almost meaningless, or without a restriction that says no rentals at all, it's meaningless.
Right, and they wouldn't be able to do that, I think that would be a violation of all sorts of...
Yeah, it's...
Again, I've always said it's a, it's a, it is an enforcement issue. I mean, if the town really wanted to enforce that, they could say that the building inspector has the right to do an inspection every six months, or upon 48 hours' notice, and go in and do a bedroom count. They could do that, but do you really want to run, run a town that way? That, that kind of police oversight?
No.
I don't, I live in the town, I wouldn't want that.
Christine, one more question on one of these, these standards here, landscaping and buffering, obviously, we have a little bit of a hardscape variance request here, but the site plan shall address hardscape, softscape regulatory limits, and provide square footage calculations of how the proposal meets the standards of Section 6.4B. Now, I think 6.4B is FAR, right? So how does FAR relate to hardscape?
It doesn't, no.
So what is this, what is, how do you interpret this?
It's a combination in the FAR table, there's a column that talks about hardscape.
Okay, so that's where the hardscape limits are?
Yes.
Okay, 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 got it. Okay, so, so, and so your site plan should include calculations of how the proposal meets the standards of the hardscape in, in 6.4B?
And it doesn't.
And it doesn't?
No.
So...
So we're asking for the dimension of relief that we're entitled to ask for under the ordinance?
I'm a little worried about our ability, our power to grant these with this, with this 12.23 here.
I mean, the ordinance, the zoning ordinance definitely gives an applicant the right to ask for dimension of relief in combination with a special use permit. That was amended a couple of years ago after the Newton case, which stated that you couldn't do that without applying the use variance standard. That was changed, and it was adopted by this town, and that's why we have the right to ask for both.
You do, but, and, but to add to that, I think we, we're struggling, I'm struggling with also the 12-point, 12.5 standards to be met when asking for a special use permit.
Which, which standard do you have a problem with?
The one that I had asked your client with, that where we started all of this, substantially serve the public convenience and welfare.
Right, I mean, I, I think that's a legal argument, and I think that adding an additional bedroom count, you know, serves, I mean, there's families with different sizes, some, there's some larger families, I come from a family of 11, we needed all the six bedrooms. So it is serving the public, at least the public that has larger families. So I think that's a legitimate argument, how does this house serve the public interest? Not everybody has 2.3 kids, some have more, and I know that there's an issue of the URI students, but again, that's an enforcement issue, that's not a, you know, how, you know, how does it serve the public issue?
Anything else for Mr. McGreen?
Can I ask a question about the parking? Hold on, because somebody said something about...
That was an objection.
That was an objection. Pulling out in a forward direction? What is...
That's never come up before, I've been, but the driveway is wide enough, if you had to do a, if you had to do a, a three-point turn, there's plenty of room there to do that. But I can tell you right now, it's a practical matter, they're not going to do it. First of all, they don't have six cars, they have one car in the garage, and maybe three or four, but even if they had six, people are going to back out onto Anadega. There's no rule that says you can't back out, but they're just saying that you should have enough room to be able to pull out in a forward direction, so they, that driveway's wide enough.
But where, I guess my, I would like to know where that requirement comes from.
It's from that standard, the objective standards in the ordinance.
On the, on the four bedrooms?
Greater than four bedrooms, yes. It's the, it's the bedroom objective standard.
Ms. Cornell, we're just trying to locate it ourselves right here.
At 12.?
Yeah, no, I don't see it there, not in number three. Not in 12.23.
17, maybe? Yeah, hold on, development standards. 7.9, I think, Section 7.9? But that section talks about the 300 square feet per bedroom, per parking space, and pulling out in a forward direction. That was the objective standard that the town adopted in order to comply with the changes up at the state legislature.
17, say that again.
I think the park, it might be... I think the park, it might be 7.9?
7.9.
7.9, 3, 5, 6, 8 on the bottom, 3, 5, 6, 8.
Yep.
3, 5, 6, 8. Please remember.
What does it say? Pulling up for it. Oh, that part, yeah. That's a nice story. So I don't see the forward...
Say that again.
I don't see the forward direction requirement in 7.9.
I know it's in the statute, I remember reading it. Isn't, isn't...
I'm not sure if it's a residential, maybe perhaps a commercial.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe it's not, I thought it, I thought it was.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't see it.
But in any event...
7.9, 7.9 references 7.10. 7.10 also, as, car spaces, that we grasp from the site of order.
It is.
Following along, the ordinance is cross-referencing.
Yeah, I knew it was something. Very deep in the bowels of the zoning ordinance.
I gotta start turning around on my driveway. All right, anything else from Mr. McGreen? Anything else?
For now, subject to, if anybody comes up to object, I know there were a couple of letters written, I'm not, I'm not sure if they're here to testify.
Is there anybody here in support of this application that wants to testify? Hearing none, is there anyone here in opposition to this application that wants to testify? Come on up, sir. You could just state your name and be sworn in by the sonographer, that'd be great.
Please, um, Mr. McGreen, if that's what you're about to be, the truth, the whole community, you should tell us, guys. Please state your name and spell it out loud.
Stephen McCool, M C C O O L D.
Thank you.
All right, sir.
You talked about the alley view or whatever he mentioned.
No, you can come up, but you need to be able to speak so that she can hear you, because she has to take down what you're saying.
Photos are, pictures, phone down a lot of pictures.
Okay, that's fine. I don't know if this was gonna help me.
Why don't you say what you have to say first, and then I think we'll decide whether we wanna take a look at that picture?
Well, you all talked about the view, and the alley, and all this stuff, and what's behind the house. It's right here in this one picture. If you wanna see it, I'll show it to you.
And is it, is, is the, what you wanna show is depicting that your view is obstructed by virtue of this?
It'll show you what will happen. And if they talk about moving, it'll show you what will happen, too.
I mean, I, I think we all wanna see this, so if you wanna come up and just, just show it to each member, that would be great.
I won't talk.
No talking, because she can't hear you from up here.
Thank you.
And if I can, I'll just put on the record, sir, that, what that, you correct me if I'm wrong, what that photograph is depicting, is it's a photograph from your, window of your home, looking out...
Towards the water.
...over their garage and roof of their house, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, can we give his address, please?
Could you give your address, please?
72 Anandega Road.
All right, and just, just so you can answer my question, so we make sure we're clear what we just looked at, because the photograph isn't in evidence, so let me just repeat what I said. So the photograph that you showed all of the members of the board is a photograph which is, appears to be taken from a second floor of your home, correct?
First floor.
First floor, and it is showing the view from the first floor towards the garage and house of the applicant.
On Anandega, we're all trying to look to the water.
Okay, and you can see it in the photograph, you can see the water and the distance, is that correct? And is it your belief that this proposed addition will obstruct your view of the ocean, or anything else towards the south?
Yes, I mean, well, factually.
Anything else?
Well, you know, I have to look ahead and, I'm, come out of the engineering world, too, industrial engineering, and we always have to do what if. And what if that house changes hands? I know all Leah's children and their grandchildren, and they're all great people, and it's hard for me to stand up here and talk. But if that house changes hands, I know what it's like, I've been in Bonnet, I've been in Bonnet for 30 years, full-time resident. I have friends that live next door to the four bedrooms. There's, I don't think there's another six-bedroom house in Bonnet, I'm not sure, but I don't know of any. So, if that does go the route of Airbnb, and you can talk about turning that car around and driving out forward, and you can tell me I'm gonna call up and there's someone in the bedroom, and people are gonna come respond, but we know the reality, right? That's what I'm up against. My children do intend to keep my house someday, and, you know, I'm speaking on their behalf, too. I sent something in, I don't know if any other neighbors did, I don't know if anybody read it, but I don't need to go over all that again if you read it. That's where I'm at, you know, so...
Thank you. And just for the record...
Excuse me, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I know we got a few objections, are those part of the record in this proceeding? And was one of them submitted by the witness?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. There's one question, sir.
I just, I wasn't sure I heard you correctly. Are you saying that there are six-bedroom, that you know...
I don't know of any six-bedroom in Bonnet Shores.
Okay, I couldn't quite understand.
I've been there for 30 years, I know a lot of people, and there's none on our street, I know. You know, Leah does have the biggest lot, the rest of the lots are all about $10,000, so it's not as big a neighborhood as you think, everybody's pretty tight, you know?
Thank you.
And if I could say one more thing, too, you know, I feel terrible, but I don't understand this process, like, I get this notice seven days ago, but, you know, did, do you know you were throwing up things with three violations?
You have to direct your inquiries towards us.
I mean, how do you, you know, how does it go through all these levels? Are these, you know, these are laws, right? These are zoning laws. And it seems like it never should have got this far, you know?
So, just, just, just so you understand, citizens have the right to petition their government for a variety of things. And this is our process, and that's why we're here. So it's part of her right to petition.
I saw it originally, she, they showed me the plans, and I didn't, I, you know, was I gonna say, I thought it was all in compliance. I felt like it was too high, I'm not into all this zoning stuff, but, you know, you would have thought that as soon as somebody drew it up, they'd draw it into compliance, and then, so, all of this stuff that's taken place in the past year and a half, you know, it's not my fault, you know? I wish, I wish I would have known it was out of all these variances a long time ago.
Would you have been notified by the planning board?
Seven days ago, yeah.
You did go through planning board?
I came and I talked to Amanda and Heidi, just to figure out what's going on, they were very helpful, too, thank you, yeah.
Does she know about your location when they go through the planning board? It's on the agenda, but not...
Okay. Second question. Would you be, would you feel that if it was attached to the house, it would be less of an impact to your view?
Well, you saw the view, I mean, I, again, these guys are great, you know, but if I look beyond, if something does happen, or it gets sold, it would be a perfect candidate for an investment property, and it would probably, if you don't think it's gonna affect the quality of my life, you're kidding yourself if that happens, you know? So, I don't know how you consider all that in, but I just felt like I gotta say it.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? No? Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to testify in opposition to this application?
Not just saying anything.
Not yet. There any, no other objectors? Jack, do you have anything you wanna wrap up, or is there no?
I'll just submit one more picture. I would know that the board, it's probably similar to the picture that was on its form. And this pic, this just, I know in one, in one of the letters, they, it's about casting a shadow, I think it said, in one of the projections, that my, the shadow cast in my, my house, I believe it was a gentleman that just spoke. So this is a picture I took a few hours before I came in here, and it shows, it actually shows, you know, the shadows all depend on what time of day, but this was towards the end of the day, and actually, I mean, that gentleman's house is substantially taller than my client's house. You can see it from the other picture, but he's up on a hill, I don't know what the height of his house is, but it's substantially taller, and you can see that the shadow, that his house is actually casting on my client's house, which is exactly opposite of what he said in his letter. So, so, and like I said, this is only 25 feet tall.
Yeah, and I don't, as I, I'm sure you're well aware, Mr. McGreen, I don't even think it's relevant for us to consider whether a view was impacted or not. There's no right to a view.
I understand that.
So I mean, we take it into consideration because it...
I was actually, by bringing it up, I was, I was trying to send a friendly message to the abutter, and I don't know what else to say, be careful what you ask for, because honestly, I called up Mr., my client, and he said, "I wouldn't have put it here if I thought I wasn't," you know, because I spoke to the gentleman a couple of years ago, and he seemed to be fine, and that's why I was putting it there, rather than moving it forward, which would block his view. And that's why he kept it back on top of the garage, rather than pulling it forward and connecting to the house, which, then we wouldn't need side yard relief, we wouldn't need height relief, we can avoid it, all those things. Which, to me, that's why I just said it, so that perhaps a neighbor would hear that and understand that, that's, if we can't, if we can't get the relief, then we would move everything closer to the house and come back with a different plan altogether.
I have one question for you, solicitor, so before we, I ask for a motion to close this hearing, is, is it, is it gonna be helpful for us to get some kind of law on this section 1223? It just doesn't...
Do you think it is, I'm happy to submit something, Mr. McGreen, if you want to submit this position, it's, this is complex.
Yeah, I don't...
Very indicative of what we're all about, right? Happy to submit something, most of the terms you agree with, I think we'll say.
So on... Yeah, so under those circumstances, if we were to decide here that we would like some legal guidance on this, do we, we just not close the hearing, and, or we just hold it in abeyance? I mean, because once we close the hearing, there can't be any further testimony or anything else, I'm just...
So on the one hand, if you close the hearing, you could get direction from the council. You can do the, the, you may have mentioned it in the prior application. Fair to Mr. McGreen, I wouldn't want to give him a, not give him a...
Correct. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I can give you one memo, I can share that with council, he may provide a memo as well, and then we can take this up, if we have some other whatever you wanna take up.
Could I, Mr. Chairman, may I also ask that the legal memo include, or maybe have staff determine whether 7.10? I mean, I know that our, our memo said that the parking, that we, he complied, they complied with parking, but could you make sure that 7.10 was actually looked at and thought about with, in that conclusion? I think it's a little different, it might be a little different.
And I would add a request to please give us some instruction on 1223-2, which seems to have that contradictory language.
Yes.
So the question now is, do I need to make, do I need to ask for a motion to hold this application open so that we can solicit legal advice? In other words, do I have to take a vote here to do that?
You can all encompass it, you can keep the application open for a memo from council and continue to debate, sir.
For a dis, for a closure and then a decision.
If, and I'm sure I'm gonna have an informal discussion with my brother as to what his opinion is before I write my opinion, but I would like to keep the, depending on what he says, I would like an opportunity to keep the hearing open, so if I need to provide additional testimony based on what he says, I have that opportunity to do so.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm suggesting, we make a motion to just hold, hold the matter open...
Right.
Pending legal memos, and then if you need to put additional evidence in next month, we'll do that and then close the hearing, but...
That's perfect.
So does someone wanna make a motion to that effect?
Historically, it's just been continued, because it's already been opened, so there was just a continuation.
Just a motion to continue, someone wanna make a motion?
What, what date are you thinking about?
The next regular zoning meeting, October 23rd.
Can I just take a...
And not to throw anything in it, but...
The meeting open pending...
I can just take a look at my calendar.
Till the October 23rd meeting?
And, and, yeah, I have a question, if it's continued and we come back, do we need the exact, all of us here and the people that are here today, don't, don't participate, or do?
Do we expect, sir, you not be here?
We never know.
I'll be here.
For example, who would say a number, you are going to be here? You might want to remember, I prefer to have the same numbers here, so that we can sit, if we know you're not gonna be here, it would be nice to go to remember, like that, so...
I can be here, I'll be here.
I'm gonna be here, David's here, so we got a form.
I'm sorry, Mr. Meister.
Yeah, go ahead, so I think with the four of us, we'd have a, we'd have a form.
Even so, a form, and then Jack, John Ball, from past experience, is John Ball will be building on it.
Yeah, okay.
And so...
Unless, are you gonna be here, Javi?
Okay, good. I just don't wanna set a date and then have them come in and not be able to do it.
One second, sir. 10:23?
Yep, and just so the objector understands, we're, we're just continuing this, sir, to the next meeting, which is October 23rd, to allow certain legal issues to be addressed. And then depending on the outcome of those, there may be some additional testimony, and if you're here and you have additional testimony that you wanna offer, I'm gonna allow it in, if it's in rebuttal to whatever Mr. McGreen puts on.
It's only in rebuttal?
Well, or with respect to these specific legal issues, we're not very strict about, like, what constitutes rebuttal in that sense. I mean, I think if you have something that you wanna present to us, we're just gonna hear it.
It sounds like they said, you know, like six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, 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 eleven,